Well, hi there, everybody, and welcome to the January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting of the City of Placerville City Council. If you would all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Dennis. Roll call. Oh, you're doing the roll call. David, I thought you said, I'm sorry, David, call roll.
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember No?
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gotberg?
Here.
Mayor Clarici?
Here. Thank you very much. All righty, ceremonial matters. Oh, we have some good ones tonight. This is really, really heartwarming here. We have a bunch of volun- volun- we have two items. The first one is volunteer appreciation for community contribution. And this meeting's just started. Contribution, Mr. Nishihara.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Before you tonight is just a little bit of a celebration of all the great things that we accomplished in twenty twenty four. As you can see, we have an amazing packed house of passionate individuals in our community that have not only shown how much they love and care for their neighbors, but they've also physically and financially contributed to everything that we accomplished over twenty twenty four. So if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna probably step towards the front here because we have a lot of thank yous and a little bit of pomp and circumstance.
Well, we should have lots of pomp and circumstance, but yeah, please, step forward. Should I, should I step forward?
Yes, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor. So I've kind of gone through this a couple of times, so if you're nervous, just know I am just as nervous as you are. Right, so we're just gonna, everybody take a deep breath. First of all, just small disclaimer, I'm new here, right? So I may have forgot a couple of people, so please, by all means, try not to, you know, send me out with the wash. Secondly, my last name is Nishihara, let's be clear on that. So if anyone pronounces a name wrong, trust me, I've been in your shoes, right? So if you can say Nishihara, good job, but if I pronounce your name wrong, just know that it hasn't been malicious, right? Is that fair? And the last thing, and I'm only here for a little bit, as much as I would love for you to come up here and share your heartfelt gratitude and accepting and appreciation, I've been here since seven o'clock this morning, so we're gonna make it quick. I'm afraid, come up here really fast, you're gonna get your award, give you a little shaky shake, hop hop, snap snap, sit sit, go. Is that fair? Good, all right. All right, here we go. Uh, we're gonna start with American Eagle Roofing Buck Phelan. So, so I've seen what I did. I'll be taking, I'll be taking, my guys, thank you so much, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, you know what? I serve at the pleasure of the man. Would you like to have individual photos or a group photo? Okay, here we go. They're gonna make us travel like a show. Uh, Mr. Doug Beer Camp from Doug Beer Camp Engineering. Mr. Paul Eagles from Sierra Pacific Ocean. Yes, Diamond Crane Company Joe and Nikki Dale. Thank you very much. Uh, Michael Potter, being the chairperson of our hometown comedy, um, show company. And there was a bunch of people working on the Hinkom Christmas Parade, but today we wanted to bring the committee, uh, Jay Sterling and Joe Baker in here. That's wonderful, thank you. Good job. Now we're gonna do a few more of these, I think we might need to be up. Uh, Eldorado Community Foundation Amy Booney. This is worthy committee, but, um, Ms. Kathy Lishman for Community Pride, this is a lot, they do a great job with all of our community guys, and so thank you guys very much for coming. We're not doing all, but it's okay. Yeah, no, we're jumping all over the place.
This is twenty one.
If you ever wonder what it's like behind the scenes of a municipality, this is what it happens to. Uh, for our Highway Fifty Christmas Zoo program, Dolly Lighter, wait. You're welcome, Dolly, thank you. And, um, there's a renovation for the Rotary Inn Field and Town Daily Week, if you guys are here tonight. Yes, if you have another chance to check it out, if you have any. Century Twenty One Plaster, Placerville, yes, Deborah Miller. Wilkinson's Quarter, Will Kim Wilkinson, here, yes. Also in that goes Marty Alton. Ecosigns L O C Dean and Scott, yes, go. Uh, line it up, Ryan Refro. Howland Landscaper, Wilbur, Wilbur Head?
Nope.
Has any first impressions designed like Stephen Carey Friar? Yes, he's good. Amazing job with the other flowers, the same thing, and those awesome, do a great job. P W Bonkers, Torian Candy, Forum, Tony. Robby C, Robin DeBulley. Rescue Electric, Tom Hornet. Yeah, I'll just read a couple of the other ones that were here. Uh, we have, um, Quintana in Cerrosa Public Affairs, and then Robinson's company. And then the last thing, if you're a recreation commissioner, all Robinson's? Yeah. This has all been rehearsed. If you're a recreation commissioner, please stand, or if you're on the planning commission, or if you're on P I A, if you serve in any part of body in ourself, in, in our, to serve the city, please stand, and everybody give him a big hand, and Robinson, and all the volunteers, if I, if I please anybody, if I, if I really apologize, I just, I will say this, this has been, and a very, very heartfelt experience, just meeting everyone and your kindness and your willingness to serve and everything that you've done in my short period here. I'm very blessed and thank you very much for all your hard work and thank you to the council and to Cleve, who's an amazing leader, so thank you guys very, very much. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, um, what Dennis said. We can't do this without you folks. This city does a lot of what it does because of the volunteers, hard work, uh, went to a wedding, our very first wedding at the Bell Tower, very exciting, on Saturday, and the Bell Tower just looks fantastic. Uh, so all the folks who were involved in that effort, special thanks, but all the things we do, so, uh, it goes without saying. Okay, so we'll say some more.
Yeah, yeah, just really quick, I mean, it, it takes a whole community and we appreciate everyone. I just really, we kind of went through that fast, I really wanted to highlight, you know, the improvements we did on the Bell Tower this year. American Eagle Roofing jumping in, just wow, so appreciate you. You know, we moved the Christmas tree, had to move it down downtown last year and this year, Sierra Pacific and Doug Beer Camp and Diamond Crane really showing up and helping this happen, and I just really wanted to highlight some of those, those big changes and things and how appreciative we all are, so thank you.
Does anybody else want to say anything? You know, man, that'd be great, all right. I'm gonna do both, then we'll, because we have to take public comment on this, right? Okay, afterwards, great, more recogni- we have more, if you weren't recognized enough, we're gonna have more recognition for former district three supervisor Wendy Thomas and apparently Dennis. Not sure how that got worked out, but it's gonna happen that way, folks, so be prepared. Uh, Mr. Morris, it has your name on here.
Well, I'll start off and I'll let you present the, the certificate, we have the certificate down here, but, um, so for those of you who may not know, I started here about the same time that Supervisor Mayor, Councilmember Thomas started here. And, um, recently I called Mayor Clarici and said, hey, I think we should recognize Mayor, or, excuse me, Supervisor, whatever. Wendy Thomas, you've got too many titles now, Wendy, I think we should recognize her for her great work as a supervisor. We recognized her when she left the council, but we can, we can add that in here now. Um, but I, I just thought, uh, we, Wendy, when she was mayor, there's a lot of things, some, a lot of good things, a few bad things, but a lot of good things her and I did together. We, we paid for some of them, but we, we survived. And I just wanted to, uh, from my perspective, thank for, thank her for all that she's done for the city, both as a supervisor and just in the community. And, uh, from my perspective, uh, thank you, Wendy, for all you've done.
Well, thank you very much for that. I will weigh in, and then other folks can too as well. Um, this is kind of weird, because I, it's gonna be like Wendy and Dennis. Um, but for, for Wendy, uh, as I, I've said this, I've, I, I, when, when, when she was finishing up at the Board of Supervisors, I had a number of times in different venues to talk about her. Um, uh, you know, I've known Wendy a long time and a dear friend, and, um, just the best, you know, um, if you want a public servant, you want someone that goes into it with, what was the, uh, clear eyes and a clear heart, or whatever that football show was. But you want that, you want someone with, uh, good intention, but smart, capable, um, thinker, all those words. Um, and Wendy's every one of those things, and she's a good person, and a lot of other stuff. And, you know, they never do it for this, no one, none of these people, none of those other people we talked to that we, we got a handshake and a photo, they don't do it for this. If they never got one of these, they'd still be doing whatever it is the heck they're doing out there. And, and that's what's amazing about really heartfelt volunteerism and, and, and public service, so. Um, but we do insist sometimes of giving people things, and so that's what we're doing tonight. Anyway, uh, just a marvelous human being, um, served this community for so long in so many capacities, and we are all better off, and certainly the middle part of Eldorado County is definitely better off for her having done what, what she has done all these, these years. So that's it, um, for Wendy. Do I have to do these together? This was not, you know, anyway. Uh, Dennis, he's, he's, he's great, Dennis, he, he's good too, and, uh, no, Dennis is the same thing, they, they come as a team, the dynamic duo, Dennis is very much, I could use almost all the same words, except he wasn't a board supervisor. Uh, but, you know, almost all the same words, and, and, and get to the same place, selfless public service, so you can't ask for anything more than that. And, uh, and then, uh, just always thinking about, but way to make this town better, and, um, and so for that, we are also grateful, and, um, and, you know, and if you ever want to know a couple of things, but if you ever, ever want to know the history of parking in Placerville, talk to Dennis Thomas, because that man is like a walkin', talkin', parking encyclopedia, and, uh, and, and it's really valuable, actually, because over time, people forget. And we have to remind them why the parking works the way it does, or make doesn't work the way it should. Um, but anyways, uh, but Dennis, again, once again, very close, dear friend, and, uh, and just, uh, we're all better off, we're all better off, for all these people, but especially those two people. Uh, does anybody else have anything they would like to add to that?
No.
My meandering things.
Just meandering things, yeah, no, just so appreciative. I met Wendy a couple of years before she got on the city council, working on projects, and just so appreciate, you're a community superstar, really. I mean, you've done public service, but I've worked on lots of projects with you that didn't have the public service, and always lead by example, with such compassion and understanding, and just, wow, so appreciate you, thank you. And Dennis, I appreciate, I appreciate you also.
All right, well, so we, we have things to give away, and, uh, and we're gonna do that, so I'm gonna go out that way. Well, come on. We're gonna get a picture taken. With the right, one of the right person. I am granting her moments to talk.
The mayor granted me a few words, so I am deeply touched, thank you. Um, Cleve, it was a privilege to start the city with you, and as you said, we've, we've been through, through a lot together, and, uh, I have such respect for your enduring leadership through all kinds of issues, it's been a privilege to work with you. And, uh, I remember when I was a brand new green council member, I have deep gratitude for Mayor Acuna, Mayor Carl Hagan, Mayor Patty Borelli, and all the other mayors that, that took me under their wing early on and, and helped show me the ropes of what this public service was all about. And it was just an absolute privilege to serve with the people I served, with, with, with John and Carol Patton, and, and every, every council member I served with, they had the utmost intentions and love for the city, we, we all shared a, a desire for the common good. And it was just, I, I love the city and loved my days here, and they were a great preparation for my time at the county in being able to help walk through very large issues at a county level, but always keeping the perspective of the city in mind. And during my time here at the City of Placerville, I also came to love and appreciate each and every one of our department heads and city employees, and then my time at the Board, our county employees and department heads, you know, so often staff gets a bad rap in the public eye. And I have come to know our city employees and county employees to be deeply committed individuals who bring their heart, their soul, their passion, their skills, and do a lot with a little. And the residents of the City of Placerville and the residents of Eldorado County are well-served by all of your work, and just my deep gratitude and thanks. And, um, also, it, I would be remiss in saying, it was just a joy to see the Broadway Sidewalks project come to full fruition, that, that started in two thousand and seven. Mark, you were with me during that time, uh, with the Caltrans grant, we got to plan and, and for all these years to see it come to fruition. Um, next, next step, the Clay Street Bridge, right, Marion? But as I, as I look around the room, I see all kinds of individuals who I've had the privilege of work with, from Measure L, and that was, that was just one of the highlights of my public service, from, from Jackie to Mark to Marion to Dolly to Carl to, to Sue Rodman, um, all of us who worked to usher that into being, and Placerville has those resources to fix our roads and pipes, so just, I love our city, love our county, and thank you all for the great privileges serving you and for tonight, it's been an absolute honor. And of course, I wouldn't be here without my family, my family's made tremendous sacrifices for me to be in this public space, and it's been an absolute joy to share this public space with my husband, and thank you for recognizing us tonight, because we are a team. And it's been, um, so gratifying to be able to walk through issues with each other, knowing that we knew each other's world, saying, am I crazy? Help me think through this, and, um, the public has been better served because we've both been in this space together, it's been a joy to walk through this with him, so, uh, thank you all, I appreciate this deeply.
Well, thank you very much, thank you very much. Well, uh, thank you, thank you, thank you very, thank you very much for that. Um, before we, I open up the public comment, I, I also, you know, um, I've been in this town a long time, and I have, I have gotten to know uh, a lot of different kinds of people, but there are like two types of people, there are people that talk and there are the people that do. And thank God for the people that do, because otherwise, we'd just be sitting around talking to each other and nothing would ever get done. Uh, and we have recognized tonight, and there were some people that have been part of these things, as Dennis mentioned, you, you, anytime you make a list, you're gonna leave somebody off the list, and that's just the reality of the universe. Uh, there are so many people that do, and we are grateful for the doers in this community and, uh, and getting, uh, getting lots of great things, uh, taken care of. So anyway, that's it. Uh, I, I am obligated by law, and because I want to, uh, open this up for public comment, so if you have something to say, um, because we have, uh, you know, a lot of people here, uh, if you want to come up and say something, uh, nice about anybody that we recognize tonight, um, please do so now, and let's, let's try to keep it to just like, like a minute or so, you know, not long tones or anything like that, but let's go at it. Otherwise, you got three minutes and, and then you're off. Thank you.
David Zalinski, always five minutes, anyway. I especially want to thank, uh, Wendy for her last newsletter, uh, she talked about all things fire wise, fire safe, and fire risk reduction, and I definitely appreciate the love for the community that she showed in that last newsletter. And Dennis, if you ever want a history of the parking lot on Main Street, our son is now fifty, but well, uh, took pictures when it was like those little kids. Uh, he, he had a, he, he took a fit picture every day of the parking lot being built, so there is another history out there somewhere. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Um, Kathy Lishman, Placerville, I, I came tonight not to receive a certificate, but to say thank you to Wendy. I was sorry that I had missed when she had her final meeting at the Board of Supervisors, because she's a creative problem solver. That is the one thing that sets her above a lot of people. She always looks for a way to do things better and doesn't, never, never accepts the status quo. And so many things have been accomplished because she had vision. And like everybody said, she cares so much about this community, about every part of it, and because she's an artist, a fabulous artist, she cares how the community looks also, and the work that she did on Broadway with, uh, Little Birds and the quotes around town. Um, we need to put her to work on things that, because now she can do things she's passionate about, not have to do everything. And she's the kind of leader this world needs with vision, insight, and compassion, and thank you, Wendy, and thank you, Dennis, and, and your family for letting you do this for us.
Good evening, I'm Steve Potiff, and just a very, very proud dad. I, I just, uh, I won't take any time, but I know that Wendy just loved the time working here with this group and with, uh, with the city, and she is just such an inspiration to me, uh, you know, born and raised here in Placerville, but when I came back after forty years away, I'm known as Wendy's dad, and I love it.
Thank you, Steve.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I only have three minutes? Can I, can I sit over there in my old seat and have?
You have two minutes and fifty seconds.
Anyways, I'll just start by saying I wish to thank the council for the opportunity to recognize Wendy Thomas. I'm gonna refrain from gushing about Wendy, which is, uh, not easy to do. Um, Wendy, you're a beautiful person with a contagious smile. I'll see Wendy down the street, and I'm smiling, she doesn't see me, but I'm still smiling. You're a gifted communicator and collaborator. Wendy leaves a legacy, having served as president of the Broadway Village Association, as a councilwoman, and as the Eldorado County Board of Supervisors as a member. I first became acquainted with Wendy back in two thousand and seven, when she was the president of the Broadway Village Association. She spearheaded the Broadway Village Design Day, event that was held back on October twentieth of two thousand and seven. Together, she brought, uh, brought stakeholders, professionals, and reimagined the Broadway corridor. These efforts led to the redesign, day brought the usual wish, wish list of public improvements, such as pedestrian safety, sidewalks, those kinds of things, public art, landscape. sidewalks, those kinds of things, public art, landscaping. Following was the Caltrans planning grant, taking the Design Day ideas from concept to implementation through the Broadway Multimodal Implementation Plan. Wendy leaves her mark on the city, and boy, has Broadway changed since 2007. We now have those local bird paintings on the various buildings, because as somebody mentioned, Wendy is an accomplished artist, and she sees the necessary implementation of art in the public space. We almost got a mural on the Highway 50 underpass, but we did get the large mural on the PG&E building. This mural is provided to the city and to its residents by the generosity of Wendy and her mother, Judy Pudoff. And we're all thankful for that. It's a beautiful mural. And look at the sidewalks, crossways, et cetera. The bike lanes have all been built as of late. Broadway has changed. This is a legacy born of Wendy's love for her community. I'm always reminded of the Design Day with a cup of coffee. Well, not each morning, but almost every morning, when I feel like reminiscing. Wendy's a class act. The participants of that event each got this Broadway Design Day envisioning-the-future coffee mug. And I got to be careful not to break it. Thank you, Wendy, for being who you are. I'm so honored to be able to be part of this recognition of all that you've done for our community. Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you, dear. Okay. Would anybody else like to say anything? Oh, here comes Sue. Okay.
Good evening, City Council. We were very lucky to have Wendy on our city council. And we were extremely lucky to have her as part of the Measure L Committee. She designed the signs. She made sure that they had enough design to them, that people actually paid attention. She made the designs that were put up when the projects were starting to go, that said Measure L. This is your Measure L dollars at work. And people have supported it. And it has done some very good things for our city. And I think Wendy has been the best county supervisor I have seen since I moved here in 1989. So I thank her, because I think she's done very good things. All the things that she has done and been involved in have been well-done, and I hope appreciated by everyone. Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you, Sue.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to also thank the mayor and the council and the city manager for allowing this time to recognize Wendy's most recent contribution as our supervisor for four years. I know you have a busy schedule, but this important moment, so many others have spoken. It's been said that no one wants to get up to speak after Wendy Thomas has made a presentation. This holds true tonight, and Pierre Vivas has set a new standard. Really appreciate the very heartfelt story he told about what has happened on Broadway in all the years that it has taken, but the beautiful work that it now is. And as, I think it was Mayor Clarici said, maybe the old mayor, there's a lot of those people in this room that have been here for that whole journey and have helped make it possible. I had the honor of serving with Wendy on the city council and working with her as our county representative for a total of 12 years. Seldom does an individual in the public service set a standard of service, commitment, compassion, integrity, and authenticity that matches Wendy Thomas and what she brings to everything she becomes involved in. Wendy's ability to listen and learn and embrace community challenges sets her far apart. Her amazing energy is a force to be marveled and respected. Noting back to the Broadway Design, I didn't get a coffee cup, but I did get a beautiful multi-page binder, complete with cover, that she just whipped together overnight. So there's that amazing energy. Do not ever doubt that Wendy Thomas will come through in an important cause. Having the honor of working alongside her also allowed me the ability to learn and grow as a person and become a better public servant. I think you've heard others speak so eloquently to that also. We definitely had some interesting challenges here at the council. You do not want the local news station trucks out in the parking lot. Not a good thing, but we worked through those challenges. Never, never once, not stepping up to the challenge. Her courage and to listen and lead from her heart, I think, is an amazing gift that has set her apart from anyone that I have worked to in public service, and that has been a huge part of her gift to the community. Having been a witness to Wendy's journey in public life, it's with great excitement that I want to see what her new adventures and passions catch in her heart, and what she writes is a new chapter in her journey. As has been said before, amazing individual. Her artistic talents are something that hopefully maybe will be part of her newest journey. But Wendy, I thank you for all you have done, and wish you many years of joy and excitement, and many wonderful grandchildren.
Thank you, Mark.
I don't know if you guys can even see me over this. I just wanted to take a moment, ditto everything that everyone has said about Wendy. What I'd like to point out about Wendy is how she does everything with a smile. When I first met Wendy, I kept waiting for the other shoe to drop. I kept going, no one can be that positive all the time. Here we are, 20-odd years later, she still hasn't showed me a different side. That is Wendy. And to sit up there and to sit in any of the places as a leader, as a supervisor, and to sit on that supervisor podium as well, and still do it with such grace, is unbelievable. We can all learn something from this woman. Thank you.
Thank you, Dolly.
Patty Borelli. I just have to say, it's just been such a wonderful ride with Wendy. We served together, as she said, she came on the council when I was on there, and she and I were able to go to several conferences, the League of California conferences, and we kind of teamed up. And I've known Wendy since she was a little girl. I went to the same high school with her mom and dad, Yale Dorado. And so, but one thing that I have to tell you, one of the first meetings we had after growing up is that we appeared together on Dancing with the Stars.
We did. You won.
Sorry about that, Wendy. Anyway, I applied everything that everyone said about her. And I'm listening to all this, and I'm trying to think how I can get her involved in getting my project going, which is Placerville Drive. I need to get her ideas down there. So anyway, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Are you good for one more? Marion Washburn, Placerville. It's hard to come up with something better than what those who have preceded me have said, because it's all been so eloquent and so beautifully stated. But I did want to add my remarks, and most of all, my appreciation for Wendy's untiring efforts, and I think been a role model for all of us who came before her. So it should have worked the other way around. But in this case, the role model was the one, the younger one who came afterwards. I learned so much from how Wendy connected public business. One thing that has not been mentioned is, I think Wendy was absolutely superb in representing this city in larger arenas. There are committees that do things that are very important at Placerville, outside of just the city or District 3. And I can't imagine a better representative than Wendy. I have to think that this town has prospered a lot because of her efforts. Also, I'd like to add just that openness of spirit and willingness to listen to people's point of view. And obviously, we've lived through very heated political times. But I think Wendy's always brought the temperature down so that the actual issues can be articulated and dealt with. And that is a wonderful quality that served the city so well. So I thank her for all that she did that I knew of, knowing that she did lots and lots and lots of things that escaped my notice. But what a wonderful treasure for Placerville.
Thank you, Marion.
I don't know anybody here, but I'll just commend everybody. Anyway, now, council meetings that I've been to, before, you got to identify yourself and give your address, but you don't have to do that here. You stay incognito. Is that okay?
This is America, and you can say your name if you want to. We ask you to do it, but you don't have to.
My name's Norman Larson.
Well, thank you, Norman. It's nice to meet you.
Oh, you got great water up here. I haven't had to run anything through my coffee maker yet, so everything's good. I just want to mention something about zerescaping. And it's a type of landscaping.
I'm sorry, Norman. Okay, Norman.
Pardon?
Hi. These are comments for the people that we recognized. So if you have zerescaping comments, we do have an item on the agenda that is for items that are not on the agenda, but we have a public comment period. More importantly, we're doing a, what tomorrow? Wildfire Resiliency Workshop at 5:00. 5:00 right here. But there's an item in the agenda where you can come up and talk about the zerescaping.
Is that tonight?
It is tonight.
I won't be here. Anyway, I threw it out there, so.
Okay. Well, thank you.
So anyway, yeah, you got great water up here. Let's go Blue.
Okay, good. Thank you. I agree. Norman. I agree about the water. We have great, I have some right here, in fact. And Dennis?
Thank you for the very.
Yes.
The whole family was told not to speak tonight, but I'm going to break the rule.
You have upset your grandchildren, Dennis. You are in big trouble. Look at that.
I'm sorry about that. It has been, it has been one of the true joys of my life to share this space with Wendy. And I say that without reservation. And to watch her do what she does behind the scenes, and all the little things that she does that she hasn't been recognized for, makes so much difference in everybody's life that they don't know about. And I see it, I watch it happen on a daily basis. And I can't go into all of them, because it happens daily. It is truly, her effort and what she puts in that I see behind the scenes is about 90% of what you see in front. Her preparation, her dedication to detail, her desire to do the best thing for our community that she can do is unmatched by anybody I know. It's an honor to be her husband, to share that space with her. One of the things that we both recognize about everybody in this room is all those little things that people do. Between, you know, putting the garlands on the entryways of each of the roads coming into Placerville, to the effort that they put into all the extra work on the bell tower, to the roads, to the landscaping that's done half-time for free, to the flower pots that were done for free. There's so many people in this community that make this community great. The recognition of just a few people tonight is a tribute to that. And both Wendy and I appreciate beyond recognition what our people do, our police officers, our firefighters, the time that they give, beyond their duty. And they go far and beyond. And I know how much the city staff puts in that they don't get paid for. It's truly an honor to be a part of this team, and it's not individuals. It's really an amazing group of people that live in this community that make it one of the best places I've ever lived. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. You see, you started with, Dennis, you started with whatever compact you can.
All right, it's been blown. Wendy put the edict out, "Don't talk," but you know, this family talks. I want to thank the city council for getting Wendy and Dennis together. Do you know this story? Wendy was running for city council. She was unattached. I was with her that night when the results were coming in up at her house, and arrived on the doorstep a huge bouquet of two dozen red roses from Dennis and David Thomas. Right? Okay. And we're saying, "What the hell? Why are they sending flowers?" Well, Wendy knew David through Kiwanis. Didn't really know Dennis. We're saying, "Why is Dennis on there?" David was plotting. David was plotting, and he said something to the effect to Dennis, "You better go get her while she's available." And he did. And it's all because of her running for city council and two dozen red roses. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judy. Doug, you're going to try to beat the red rose story? Come on.
We'll try. We'll try. Doug Beercamp, a lifelong member of the community. I just want to thank, on behalf of our family-owned company, Doug Beercamp General Engineering, all the work we've done through the years for the city with Dennis Thomas, and then Wendy Thomas, and then on to the El Dorado County with Wendy Thomas. And I just appreciate, and our family appreciates, the confidence that the community's had in our company to do these projects. Really appreciate it very much. Thank you, Dennis and Wendy. And as far as the Broadway project goes, I guess when that was first talked about, I was probably in diapers. And the worst part of it is, now it's finally, it's come to fruition and done this year, it won't be long before I go back into diapers. Thank you for your time.
Oh, bring it home. Okay.
I should just close publicly.
Okay. I'm going to, you know what? We had roses, we've got diapers. I'm closing public comment, so. Thank you all. Yeah, I don't know. In an odd way, Doug, you did. Okay. Anyway, so we're closing public comment on that. We're going to take some time, because you might have seen cake. And who doesn't like cake? So there's some cakes back there, and I think there's water, coffee, or whatever. Anyway, we're going to break for 10 minutes. Go enjoy yourselves. Talk amongst yourselves. All right, I'm going to die. Go, cake. All right, everybody. Hello. You see, is it working? Is it working? Can you, well, no, but. Okay, everybody, we're going to get going here, so everybody can leave. Patty Borelli, former mayors. All former mayors have to sit down. Hi there. You see, the line's still not working.
We might have to switch places, because I've got to run a meeting.
But this ain't working.
Oh, wait. Oh, it is now. Okay. Oh, wait, oh, it is now, okay. It's fixed, I know it's on, it goes on. Like so many things in life, it works sometimes. You can't hear it?
All right.
Is it? Is it? Is it? Okay. All right, we'll give everybody a chance to leave.
Actually, they can leave while we're doing this. This is.
Is it, is it working all the time?
I'd like a few numbers here.
Oh, that's better. That's way better.
Some old standards. All right. Thank you very much for coming back. If you're, if you're leaving, take some cake with you. Just, that was wonderful. Okay. I can pull this way out here. Number four, we have a closed session report.
Thank you, Mayor. The council met in closed session, there was no public comment, and the council provided direction to staff.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, the adoption of the agenda. Is there anything anybody would like to change? Okay, let's have a motion in a second.
I'll move to adopt the agenda.
Oh, second.
Okay, do we have any public comment on our agenda? Oh, no. Not on the agenda. All right.
The water's good.
But the water's good. Adoption, okay, so we have, no one wants to comment on the agenda, so all in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you. Do we have any announcements to the public from the council? We'll start over here.
None at this time.
I went to a really great event on Saturday with the Historical Society for our namesake culinary masterpiece, the Hangtown Frye. It was disgusting, but the, but the event was wonderful, so, yeah. Recognize them for that, they did, they did a great job.
How can you say that? It was very gross. Signature meal. Okay, over here.
Saturday, went to our first wedding of the year for our city engineer. That was a wonderful, yeah, wedding, yeah. It was great. I loved the first dance.
I attended the Martin Luther King Jr. commemoration event here in Placerville, so that was very nice.
Very nice. My birthday's the 15th, too. Anyway, but that's not important. I also went.
Mine's the 20th, so there.
I also went to the wedding, it was wonderful. It, it, it went very well. Just the right amount of traffic, just the right amount of looks, so it was all very good. Okay. Okay, so, that's six. Oh, we are now at the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are, are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The reading of the full text of all resolutions will be waived unless a council member requests otherwise. So, does anybody have anything they want to pull from the consent calendar? Do you have any questions about the consent calendar? Okay. Does the public wish to comment on our consent calendar? Okay. Can someone move the consent?
I'll move the consent calendar.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gottberg?
Aye.
And Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Thank you.
All righty, thank you. This is the public comment part of our show, and for non-agenda items, so this is public comment on non-agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. State law prohibits the council from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special action of the city council under specified circumstances. I reserve the right to limit the speaker's time to three minutes, which I do. You are not allowed to make personal attacks on individuals or make comments which are slanderous or which may invade an individual's personal privacy. So, do we have anybody that would like to make a comment?
All right. My name's Taylor Duncan, lifelong resident of Placerville, born and raised. So in 2012, my wife and I purchased our first home at 3680 Cool Water Court. It had everything we wanted, affordability, friendly neighbors, privacy, and proximity to town while feeling removed from the city. Although it boarded Placerville's water reclamation facility, this was not an issue because of dense oak trees, pines, and brush along the shared property line, it completely shielded the facility from view. For years, we enjoyed our peaceful backyard, abundant wildlife, and sense of privacy. That changed dramatically in the summer of 2022 when the city began clearing the land next to our property. Without any prior warning, a city crew arrived and used a masticator to remove young trees and vegetation. Heritage oaks and pines protected by local regulations were also cut down. No dust or fire abatement measures were taken until I reported this to a public official. When I asked about the clearing, a city employee informed me that it was for, for fire protection. This marked the beginning of a significant negative changes to our property and environment. The removal of trees exposed the water reclamation facility, which now dominates our view. Wildlife, including quail and doves, disappeared and have not returned. At night, the facility's bright lights shined directly onto our property and into our home. Noise from the facility has become far more noticeable. On January 12th, a city employee from the facility informed me that the remaining trees on the adjacent property would also be removed to make way for the, for a solar field. He shared concerns about the project's potential issues, including security risks, and stated that he suggested relocating the solar installation to another part of the facility. Unfortunately, his recommendations were ignored. I immediately informed my neighbors on Cool Water Court, Winesap Circle, and Winesap Circle. None of them had been notified about the project. I later learned they only noticed was a single mention in the Mountain Democrat, an insufficient effort to inform the community. The solar field project has already caused significant harm. The clear view of the water treatment plant and solar field will depreciate neighborhood property values. Removing heritage oaks, other vegetation, has disrupted local ecosystems, driving away wildlife. We've lost privacy, tranquility, with increased noise, light pollution, and a degraded view shed. I urge the city council to take action to mitigate the damage caused by this project. Specifically, I request visual and sound abatement, trees and vegetation along the shared property line to restore privacy, reduce noise, and block light pollution. And improve community engagement, implement stronger notification procedures to ensure meaningful public input for future projects. This project moved forward without proper consideration for the impact of the residents. It is the city's responsibility to address the harm caused and restore what has been lost. My family, my neighbors, and our community deserve better. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Taylor.
The water's good. Just to, here on the Hangtown Frye, in all fairness, they used canned oysters. Do not make Hangtown Frye using, they, they should be fresh oysters. Makes a world of difference. And one of the things you learn is that in those days before there was a regulation against having hens and chickens and roosters in town, it cost $14 for an egg, and that's why they were so valuable and so prized. And they've got another, another gig next month on, on Reverend Pierce that should be interesting. The other thing to mention is that, as the vice mayor said about the Martin Luther King presentation, this room was packed, it was wonderful attendance, and it was great that she gave a pitch for volunteers to show up for, whenever the commission openings, so people will follow through. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Does anyone else wish to approach?
Ruth Carter, City of Placerville. I have two items to hopefully open up a discussion with the city council. The solar field that's going in at the water treatment plant, I would implore the city to, you know, help do something with the neighbors in terms of their view of just solar panels being open. They've lost their privacy. The smell is significant. I don't know if you've ever driven through that neighborhood certain times of the day, and the sound is significant. So I would implore you to check that out and come up with a plan that is, is better for our neighbors and our community. And the second thing is, I would like to see if the city council is willing to reopen a discussion on a modification for the sign pole ordinance. As we know, the Hangtown Cantina is no more, Rockefeller Oysters is no more, and I am a real estate broker. I have extensive knowledge of how long things take. The ordinance does not give property owners long enough time to get a new tenant in there. There are many times where these properties sit vacant for more than a year, as we have seen on Main Street and Upper Broadway. I would implore that there be some modifications to allow for a for lease or for sale sign so that it won't be considered an abandoned sign. So that is my question, you know, can the city council open that up? And I know I'm not gonna get an answer tonight. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ruth. Are there any other, are there any other comments? It's working now, okay? All right. Well, thank you very much. We have written communications, which we have, we have, they've been copying and put on the back, as always?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay. All right, let's go to public hearings. We don't, we didn't pull any items from the agenda, we didn't pull any items from the consent calendar, and we have no ordinances tonight. Public hearings, 11 and 11.1. Consider finding the frontage improvements associated with the Placerville Drive Bicycle and Pedestrian Facilities Project Phase 1 necessary in authorizing staff to place a demand upon the current property owners of 16 parcels requiring performance pursuant to the recorded street frontage improvement agreements for said parcels. Ms. McConnell? Are you still Ms. McConnell?
I mean, right now, yeah.
Okay, great.
It's a process. All right, thank you, Mayor and council members. The purpose of this item is to take the necessary steps to authorize staff to place a demand upon the current property owners of 16 parcels requiring performance pursuant to the recorded street frontage improvement agreement for each parcel. The purpose of the street improvement chapter of the city code is to ensure that all streets and highways meet the minimum standard for safe and convenient vehicle and pedestrian access and travel. By virtue of this chapter of the city code, the cost is, the cost required for public improvements will be borne equitably by the abutting property owners. Section 8-9-3 of the city code requires the construction of curb, gutter, sidewalk, and street widening along the frontage of all properties within city limits in conjunction with certain types of development projects or the construction of building improvements. However, the section 8-9-4 of the city code allows for the deferral of those improvements where it is found that it would be in the best interest of the city to cause all or a portion, portion of the required work to be done on a project basis rather than an individual basis. In that case, a variance can be granted to defer the construction of those frontage improvements when a street frontage improvement agreement, which I will refer to as an SFIA, is entered into between the property owner and the city. These requirements have been in effect since the mid 1970s, and there are currently more than 400 SFIA's that have been executed and recorded with the El Dorado County Office of the Recorder. The Placerville Drive Bicycle and Pedestrian Facilities Project will provide safe and accessible bicycle and pedestrian facilities and improved multimodal connectivity on Placerville Drive from Armory Drive to the US 50 undercrossing. The project will also construct sidewalk and bicycle facilities on Green Valley Road from Placerville Drive to Mallard Lane. The project was initially funded, excuse me, through the Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Improvement Program for the environmental and engineering design phases. Later on, the city was awarded an active transportation program grant for the construction phase of the project in the amount of $15,417,000 for only Phase 1 of the project. The Phase 1 project includes reduced project limits on Placerville Drive from Ray Lawyer to Cold Springs Road and on Green Valley Road from Mallard Lane to Placerville Drive. There are currently 16 properties within the limits of the Placerville Drive Phase 1 project that have an SFIA in place with the city. Pursuant to the provisions of section 8-9-4 of the city code, staff is recommending that the council make a finding for the need for the construction of curb, gutter, and sidewalk improvements through the project limits and authorize staff to place a demand upon the current property owners requiring performance pursuant to the recorded SFIA. In the case of this project, we have a unique opportunity. Since the city has received a significant amount of grant funding to construct the frontage improvements, for the benefit of public safety, pedestrian access, and connectivity, staff does not intend to place a demand for performance requiring the property owners to construct or pay for the construction of their frontage improvements. Instead, staff is recommending that the property owners either participate in the right-of-way transactions needed for the city's project or pay for only the engineering design costs in the case where no transaction of right-of-way is needed. Of the 16 properties in the project limits, there are 12 properties where right-of-way transactions are needed to construct the city's project. There are four properties where no right-of-way is needed. The frontage improvements and construction work fit within the city's right-of-way. For the 12 properties where there is right-of-way needed, the property owners were invited to an informal meeting on November 18th, 2024, to inform them of the city's project and the intent to place a demand for performance pursuant to their SFIA's. The meeting materials informed the owners of their SFIA, the city code requirements, and the right-of-way needs for the city's project. Staff presented them with three options to fulfill the requirements of their SFIA. They were given the option to construct the improvements, which would involve hiring a contractor, applying for permits, and constructing the improvements. They were given the option for the city to construct the improvements, and the property owner would be required to pay for the improvements. Each property owner was provided with a current construction cost estimate, and they were given the option for the city to construct the improvements using the federal grant funds, and the property owner would only be required to participate in the right-of-way transaction needed for the projects, which is in accordance with city code section 8-9-5, providing an offer of dedication if needed for the public sidewalk right-of-way or just a temporary construction easement for the city's contractor to build the improvements or conform paving on the private property. In a typical public capital improvement project, the city would be required to perform an appraisal for the right-of-way acquisition or temporary construction easement and make an offer of just compensation. The property owners were informed so that if they chose option 3, there would be no funds exchanged from the city to the property owner, and the SFIA would be fulfilled through the completion of the right-of-way transaction. So far, all property owners have responded, have selected option 3. At the time of printing my staff report, four property owners had not yet made their selection. However, since then, two others have selected option 3. With the other two properties remaining, we would continue to work with them over the next month to reach a selection so we can proceed with the right-of-way process for the project. For the four properties without any project-related right-of-way needed, staff is recommending placing a demand for performance pursuant to the SFIA to only cover the engineering design costs associated with our frontage improvements. Typically, engineering design costs are estimated at 10% of the construction cost. Over the last few months, I've held many meetings and had phone conversations with the affected property owners. We have received positive feedback and support for the project, and as a whole, the property owners have been in support of staff's recommendation for handle, how to handle the SFIA's on the project. All of the affected property owners were sent a notice and invited to this public meeting. I've been asked the question a lot of times by many of the property owners if what I think I am proposing is fair, and to that I always say yes. The city code relating to SFIA's is very old. Back in the 1970s, transportation grant funding was really different. You could only get funding to build new roads, and there was no funding for sidewalks. So what we did then made sense. But today, we can no longer get grant funds for capacity-increasing projects, but there are many grant funding opportunities for bicycle and pedestrian projects. So I do think this is a fair solution. The proposal obligates all property owners with an SFIA to still contribute something monetarily towards the project to, to fulfill the requirements of their SFIA. That concludes my verbal report, and I am happy to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions? No? Okay, no. Let's open this up for public comment. Does anybody wish to speak to this item?
I think if I were a property owner, option 3 sounds like a very good deal. And, because the city is growing, it, there's going to be pedestrian and bicycle. And because the city is growing, it is going to be pedestrian and bicycle improvements along Placerville Drive. So if you're a property owner, this is the best way to go. And even though these are old and they may have done in the seventies, they're still valid. There's still a lien, there's still an obligation on your property. So I think, I think our city engineer has done an outstanding job getting all these people together and getting them all to look at what they need to do.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you. It is impressive work because of the amount of detail that's described. So a couple of questions is, one, did any of these fourteen or so persons who own property get notified specifically of this hearing? And earlier, there was discussion about largely or wholly supportive. So the question would be, who are the exceptions? Because sometimes we do run into the problems that was described earlier by the property owners. We have all this clearing done that seemed like it was more than needed. So you always wonder, well, did they know in advance? And in this case, did all these people know in advance that their issue would be up before you tonight? So those are the questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk.
Hello. My name is Linda Temporo, and my husband and I own property at two fifty-nine Placerville Drive. I did get a notice that this meeting was taking place tonight, so, and I met with Melissa. I'm one of the four properties that in nineteen ninety-two, we signed that agreement. We had to, to get a permit to build, to add on to our building. We added nine hundred and eighty-eight square feet, and so to do that, to be allowed to build, we had to sign that agreement. So her estimate for us, our little piece of property, was eighteen grand, which obviously is a lot of money. And so she's offering us the eighteen hundred instead. Obviously, I would love it if the grant money would cover the design part, so we didn't even have to pay the eighteen hundred. But if that's a hard no, then I'm gonna have to choose the eighteen hundred instead of the eighteen thousand. I mean, I know you're, it's gonna make the street better. The other thing that I was concerned about is our handicap spot is in front of our building. And as you know, parking in Placerville is a little tricky, and we, we have, we have to share a driveway with a Mexican restaurant next door, and we just don't have the space for another handicap spot. But Melissa assured me that it's not going to encroach on our handicap, our handicap parking, so that made me very happy. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bruce Carter, City of Placerville. And I just wanted to say that, as Melissa pointed out, our ordinance and reason for signing off on that agreement may be a moot point, and maybe because we got so much grant money, the other four owners should be afforded the same option to not have to pay that now. Because there was no money for sidewalks at the time that they did that, and now we do have that option, and we did get a grant. So maybe that would be an equitable, equitable option to allow for those other four owners, rather than forcing them to pay for that ten percent design. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
John Williams, I'm a property owner that's impacted as well. I was, perhaps it was sent, but I was not notified of the November meeting. I did get the, a notice for this, so we can perhaps schedule time to talk. Go ahead.
I was gonna say, you have a thousand.
Okay. Okay. Okay, perfect. Just thinking I messed up. But my cost is eight thousand seven hundred dollars, which is significant and does impact me financially. So I guess I'd like to know why the grant money doesn't cover all of this? If that could be answered, that'd be great.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. No, I was not. Do, do, do we have, some of the questions maybe can't be answered, but other ones, do you have answers?
Yes. So the question about did all the property owners get notified of this hearing? Yes, they did. I notified everybody once, if not twice, for this meeting. The, let's see, I think generally the question about can the grant pay for the design? Yes, it could, but at that time, those property owners would not be contributing anything towards their street frontage improvement agreement. And so I don't know that that would be the recommendation of staff to allow them to fulfill their obligation if there is no contribution. So the other property owners that are contributing in the right-of-way way, we would be paying them for their temporary construction easements. So that's kind of where I stand on that.
All right. Anything else? Any comments, questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll move eleven point one.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we get the roll call, please? Councilmember Carter? I'm sorry. Did you have a comment? Hold on.
I know, I just, you know, since now that the motion's on the table, I just, you know, discussion on it. I, I do feel weird about this. I understand staff's, you know, that the rest of these property owners are foregoing compensation, and, you know, this feels weird, but I think that I agree with staff. And so it just, I had to kind of noodle it for a second. I wasn't quite ready there, so thank you for giving me a chance to kind of work it out of my head, but, yeah, thank you.
Okay. We want, we want, we want everybody to be happy, reasonably happy. Anyway, okay. Okay, good. All right. Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember, no?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Ice Mayor Gottberg?
Aye.
Mayor Clorici?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you, staff. Thank you, public. Okay. The next item is twelve point one. Consider a letter of objection to the Eldorado County Board of Supervisors for the proposed micro enterprise home kitchen operations, or Mako. Mr. Cahill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. So, you know, this, this came up just very recently because I think it was a letter from the city manager of South Lake Tahoe, Tahoe, who notified your city manager that the county, Eldorado County, was considering adopting a Mako ordinance. And Mako, or I guess I was calling it Niko, but whatever, Miko is a new type of retail food facility that allow an individual to operate a restaurant from their private residence or prepare restaurant-type foods from their private residence. And the, this is, so it's a state law that came about the end of twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and, you know, so I think the, first of all, the concern with this legislation known as AB six-two-six, and then there's other bill, subsequent bills that followed up on the regulations with more detailed regulation. So does a couple of things. It preempts local land use authority in regulating these. It does allow the county, through its health department, to regulate the public health aspect of these operations. And it's, you know, in talking with the staff, the fire department, public works, there are some concerns. And also spoke with the Cooks, Cooks Alliance, that is, the advocacy group for these small kitchens, these, these home enterprises. And so on one hand, there's concerns about fire safety and potential impacts to sanitation facilities, city sewer. There's issues, there's concerns about parking because you can have a restaurant, you can have patrons come to your home and sit down at tables, and you can sell and prepare a meal, you could potentially have alcohol service. So it's, it's a lot of unknowns at this time. I mean, it, so in terms, the advocacy group's position is that these are very small operations. Miko's are regulated in terms of their annual sales at a hundred and three thousand a year, a hundred and three thousand nine hundred, and it'll go up again this, sometime this early this year. There's a limitation on the number of meals that they can serve per day, and also a maximum of ninety meals per week. It, as far as I can tell, it would be very difficult to really ascertain whether or not they're meeting, adhering to these limits. They could always, they could sell double, and likely it would be difficult to determine that they were, you know, in excess of the law. The city has some code enforcement ability. No signs are permitted. There can't be, you can't post a sign on your house that says Eat It, Eat It Joe's, nothing like that. There's no, they're also comply, they have to comply with local noise ordinances. It's not clear that the city could regulate even the hours of operation. It's, it's possible, but, you know, when I read the, the language of the state's law, it says that you cannot impose any other, any other restriction on a micro enterprise home kitchen operation in any residential dwelling for zoning purposes. So I, it's possible, but it's not clear. On the next, second page of the staff report, it did show this map of California with all the counties, about eighteen counties. There are others that are coming on board, apparently, but there's at least, right now that I know of, is eighteen counties that have adopted this state legislation. So I want to be really clear, the state law does not apply in, in a county until the county board of supervisors adopts that ordinance. So that's, there is some discretion there. And let's see if there was anything else here. I do think, you know, it's also, in terms of this law, I understand, you know, from, from the planning perspective, I think, you know, the state with regard to housing said, we have a housing emergency, affordable housing emergency. So that they use to justify then their intrusion and usurping of local land use authority to say, well, we have an emergency, we have to step in. I don't know that there's an emergency, a restaurant emergency, there's not enough restaurants. On the plus side, there is, when you read through the, I have a copy of AB six-two-six included, and it talks about, you know, the farm-to-table movement and, you know, locally grown, locally sourced, so that's, that's some of the motivation behind this. I also checked, you know, I had a good conversation with the advocacy director, very nice, very pleasant person. She said there's about five hundred and thirty of these little restaurants throughout California, so a very small number. She said, and just only a fraction of those restaurants actually, or I should say, home kitchen operations, operate a restaurant component where people drive to the house and sit down and have a meal. She said it's a very small percentage. And I think, as with most codes, most people are gonna operate pursuant to the law. There's always a few bad actors. And the concern here is, how can we deal with those folks proactively if the fire department can't conduct inspections, if the public works department can't inspect sewer lines? So there are concerns. And so that's our recommendation here, is that you consider authorizing the mayor or city manager to send a letter of objection to the county board of supervisors, asking them not to adopt this regulation or this ordinance at this time, and, but perhaps in the future, maybe when there's more data. There seems to be very little hard data in how these are operating. The advocacy group said they are doing that research now, they just have, they're not there yet. The other alternative recommendation is that you recommend to the board of supervisors that if they adopt this ordinance, to consider it, consider including a sunset provision or a, you know, essentially to make it a pilot program. So that is, that's it in a nutshell. I'm happy to answer any questions. There is some staff emails in here, there's also some correspondence from the, from the advocacy group, and so that's, that's in your packet. So with that, that concludes our presentation on this item.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
Questions? Comments? Yes. Start with the first thing, parking.
Well, yeah.
That could get really interesting in some small street neighborhoods. Just a bunch of quick little math. You said a hundred and three thousand a year is what they're allowed to do? So basically, you take that, say they're forty bucks a plate, that's seven meals a day they can do for three hundred and sixty-five days. That's two thousand five hundred and seventy-five meals. That's running a restaurant.
Yeah, you don't need to convince me.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm just walking through my head here going, okay, that's, I see all sorts of issues going on here, not to mention just the standard, you know, health issues. I did have a conversation with Cleveland, did some looking. The board of health is allowed to go in, but they have to announce it, they can't just do surprise visits. Not to mention, yeah, the grease issues with possibly, yeah, all the fog issues with, you know, our water treatment plant, which I don't think we want to be dealing with any of that.
No.
So, I mean, not that all of a sudden five hundred restaurants are gonna pop up, but that's, there's a lot of issues there, so, yeah, I'm definitely for the objection of this one.
Right.
Yeah, just, to staff's knowledge, has there ever been a member of the community or the county that's asked for this beyond this advocacy group that, from out of the area? Is there any been, there's no outcry for this from the local community?
Not from us. So let me, let me handle this. It's my understanding, we, we did have, prior to my communication with South Lake Tahoe city manager, Joe Urban, we did have the county come, county staff came and made a presentation to us, and simply outlined what, similar to what you heard in your staff report, and said that they had had some people come to a board meeting requesting that the county consider it. I guess there were a few board members said, yeah, let, let's at least consider it and take a look at it, and that's what started the whole process. And then, like I say, South Lake Tahoe took the first step, they, you've got in here what they decided to do. They said, they only sent a letter saying maybe a pilot program, let's put it that way. And so we presented that as an option also. But, yeah, so that, that's how it all started, is they came to us, and apparently they did have some people in the county who came to the board of supervisors. And I, I think our main concern with this, and maybe some of you, I know some of you have done some more research on this and made comment, is there, there are other things that people can do if they want to make things, there's another, through our home occupation and, yeah, the cottage food option that could serve a lot of maybe what we're doing without being able to actually do a restaurant in their, in their homes. We, we feel that there are better options, and if you read this one line out of the law in this second paragraph under background, I think that, that tells the story pretty well, that "A city, county, or city and county shall not prohibit the operation of, require a permit to operate, require a rezone of the property, or, or levy any fees on, or impose any other restriction on a micro enterprise home kitchen operation in any residential dwelling for zoning purposes." So that's pretty, I don't know of any other use that we say we won't do anything to you, basically, is the way I saw it. So anyway, that's, that's our.
And that presents the other issue, is that, yeah, it's great if we can go and do inspections, but they don't provide us the ability to collect fees to pay for these inspections. And it is important, I mean, the materials that the advocacy group sent us does say that they have to adhere to all the ordinances for residential areas such as parking. So, I mean, there's, honestly, there's few, if any, residences in the city that could successfully run a sit-in. So I, I don't think, I think this whole thing is pretty much moot, because I don't think anybody in the city could really qualify for a sit-in type of scenario, but, yeah, I, I, that's, that's my thoughts for now.
They, they, yeah, so, go ahead, go ahead.
I'll just add, I agree. I think it's a terrible idea to let people run restaurants in their houses in residential neighborhoods from public safety to, you know, fires, to parking, to, I mean, the sewer system, I mean, the list goes on and on of all the reasons why this would be a really bad thing to do, and I can't think of any positives. If people want to run a cottage kitchen out of their house to sell goods that they cook in their home, they can already do that as a business. It's not prohibited as it stands. Like, this is just saying you could have a restaurant in your home, which I don't think is appropriate.
Well, I mean, that's what I was just thinking of, like, okay, what could I actually do with this? I could open the no bistro. And every Friday and Saturday night and Sunday for brunch, I can serve thirty meals. And I can have outdoor dining on my back patio. And I can clog the street with cars. And my neighbors, you know, instead of me having maybe two parties a year, I'll have, you know, three a week. I'm not going to be a popular person on that street. But, you know, it really degrades the integrity of the neighborhood is what I think it does. And, you know, I had the thought, I said, well, maybe homes in the business districts that that would be appropriate. But then really think about the unfair competition that they're going to be giving the restaurants where they don't have to do all the other things that restaurants have to comply, besides not even talking about, do your houses have to be ADA compliant? You know, what if someone gets food poisoning or trips at your house? Do they just sue that individual? I mean, there's just so many things that this hasn't really been worked through. But in general, I I don't want to live with someone next to a restaurant next to me where, you know, kids are playing out in the street after school, and now you're having all this restaurant traffic where they're trying to play ball. I I just don't see the positive, although I found out I could make one hundred and three thousand dollars a year, you know? I've already done the math. That's twenty-two dollars a meal. If I capitalize on all ninety meals, if I do less, I can charge more. I mean, wow. And I don't have to pay permits, and I don't have to deal with any of the city stuff. What a deal.
Yes. I don't, yeah, I don't I don't have anything, believe it or not. I have nothing to say. Let's open this up for public comment.
Sir Rodman, City Placerville, I would not like to live next door to a home that decides they're going to be a restaurant. And I think there's probably very few other people who would like to do that either. I think it's a bad idea. Our streets are really not designed to have parking for a large group or even a fairly small group in residential areas. Usually, it's it's icy to find out if you can have a parking place for your own house, let alone to have guests coming in for meals. And this just this seems like a really, I don't know who dreamed this up. But I don't think they were thinking very straight. I think this is a poor idea. We should definitely say, no, thank you.
Hi again. It's Doris Carter, City of Placerville. So something else to consider, and I kind of had a question, and maybe you guys can answer this or not. So if a couple of things, if this got rammed down our throat in the city, because the state decides that we have to do something, then, you know, would we be able to have an overlay for the city ordinance like the county does on some other things? The other thing is, would there be an option for city to collect any sort of tax like they do on all of the other businesses? And, you know, this could potentially be something if we were forced to adopt some iteration of it, you know, a way for people to do meal preps and do like, you know, to goes, like Meals on Wheels, and have a contract with the county or something like that. So there might be some other good positive things out of it. I'm just curious about the potential for overlay. I know it was very clear on no restrictions, but I'd be curious to know about the adoption of sales tax and those details. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else. Yeah, in theory, they'd be subject to sales tax, but, you know, I imagine a lot of cash changes hands in these things. And so and then how, you know, and then enforcement becomes an issue. The state actually would not be ramming this down our throat. That would be our good friends about two and a half or three miles from here. So if they do take this up as a board of supervisors, I'm going to be there to talk if I'm in town, I'll be there to talk about it. And I suggest all of you be there to talk about it. Because we're somewhat, and that's really the annoying part of this, is we're somewhat at the will of the county. I can't imagine who thinks this is a good idea. Anyway, so, yeah, there'd be sales tax potentially. And and, you know, we have to compel our friends down the road to not vote for this.
Well, also, let's make a clarifying. When I looked at the letter that we were proposing, it proposes a one-year pilot project.
That is an option.
I that's an option. It sounds like we don't want to do.
I don't know. I don't.
Just clarify, just clarify, that's what it sounds like, just clarify.
So.
Staff.
Anyway, I think that's it. We've left enough hair into this thing. Thank you. Do I have a motion to send a no letter?
I will move that we use staff recommendation number one, authorizing sending an attached letter to of objection to the MECOS.
Thank you.
All right, second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor.
All right.
Aye.
Yeah, we can do that, right?
We can. We just have to record it as unanimous.
It was unanimous. Okay. Twelve point two, consider options for city manager recruitment slash appointment based on the projected retirement of the city manager on October third, twenty twenty-five. Go.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. At your last meeting, you requested, as I have announced my upcoming retirement, that I provide options for recruitment that the council can do to bring on your next city manager. And after discussion and had some discussions with our city attorney and reviewing what those would be, I presented three options in the staff report. One would be do a full open recruitment using a private recruiter, based on experience and ones I've talked to for the past. I estimate that cost to be at least twenty to thirty thousand dollars, probably closer to the thirty. And depending on the recruitment firm, could be even above that. So that is option number one. If that option is chosen, it should begin immediately, because from experience, by the time you select the recruiter, get the the, you know, recruitment announcement prepared and all of that, and go through interviews, it it will take you six or seven months to get through that process. The option two would be to conduct a full open recruitment, but use your internal staff or human resources staff and myself to conduct the search. The estimated cost for that would be for the advertising, the announcement. And that I've kind of ballpark estimated between five and seven thousand dollars, depending on how broad we go with with the announcement. This is a possibility. It would increase some workload on staff, but I think we could do it depending on how aggressive you want to be with that that type of recruitment. The third option would be to consider an in-house recruitment, allowing only current employees to apply. This could be done using our current staff. It's a fairly simple process at that point. There would be some costs with this process, but it would be minimal and would should be absorb that in our current year budget. This would allow the city council to interview potential in-house candidates prior to making a decision. My comment on that one is if you decide to go that route, we should probably do it sooner than later, so that if that doesn't work out, you still have time to go back to option one or two to consider. And there may be other variables of these that that you can consider, but those are the basic ones that I came up with that you could consider at this time. So with that, I will answer any questions you might have.
Questions, comments?
Question.
I have a comment. I think my personal feeling is we should do two. It opens it up, allows for all the possibilities. It's relatively expensive. I understand Mr. Cahill is a brilliant recruiter from a previous life and will no doubt guide us through all the recruiting obstacles that might be out there. But anyways, my own comment. So anyway, anyone else want to say? Okay, public, would you like to weigh in on this? She is, she is just on fire.
So I think it would be a great idea to open it up to current staff. And, you know, then if that doesn't work out, then open it back up for a more expensive option. Always budget minded.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
If you only open it up to current staff, then you will still be at the position of having to figure out how to fulfill that position when they're recruited for city managers. So you're not going to get away from recruiting someone somewhere down this line. I think that option two, where you open it up, open it up, leave it open to current staff if they'd like to apply, great. And open it up to whoever you can you know in the in the other, you know, the greater community here. But going to a national recruiter can get pretty expensive. And the last time we've tried that, it hasn't worked out too well, because we don't pay enough to get somebody unless they already love Placerville and want to be here. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we will bring it back here. What is the pleasure of the council?
I just I was gonna add that I tend to agree with the mayor that I'm kind of landing personally on option two. I think it's a happy median between I agree with the public comment that, you know, the last time we did do a recruitment firm, you know, it didn't work out very well. And but we should have the ability to open up to members of the public that are, you know, interested in the position, but while still including our current staff. So that's kind of where my mind is.
Yeah, I will. I will add to that. I'm also kind of in line with with option two for a couple of reasons. What I think we have some really good in-house potential candidates. And so I don't think we need to hire a recruiter by any means. But I also only want to go through this process once. So if we only open this up to internal people and we, you know, don't get any candidates, or we only get one, and we decide that's not going to work for us, then we're moving on to, you know, option one or two as well, and going back to the well. And so I would rather just have it be an open, an open listing that both internal and external people can apply to. We can look at all of those at once, interview everybody at once that we want to interview, and make a decision.
And I think it also demonstrates to the public that we are casting a reasonably broad net when we're taking on the consideration of a very important position for the city. So I think it serves a multiple purposes. Can I get a can I get a thing?
You guys want to talk or no?
Right.
Okay, I will move that we move forward with option two from the staff report.
A motion.
Oh, second.
Yeah, a second. Do we want to do roll call on this because we're doing something or does it matter?
This isn't a public hearing item. If we do it without roll call, we just have to.
Make sure it's unanimous.
Well, and articulate who voted what in the minutes.
Okay. Roll call. The time I took to ask the question, we could have done the roll call.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember No.
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gottberg.
Aye.
Eric Clorici.
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay. Council reports from other agency meetings. Eldorado Transit.
Did not meet in January. They meet February sixth.
Eldorado County Transportation Commission, we did not meet. They meet February sixth. Laughco, it has your name on it, but.
Yeah, my nomination didn't come through in time, so Nicole was there and was still our official member.
Uh, we moved the meeting time to three thirty, and that was about the only action item in that meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Secog, we had a meeting. It was it's a first meeting for all the new people, official meeting. So there wasn't a lot to say. They they did a lot of like, this is your life as a Secog commissioner kind of stuff and whatnot. The next meeting will have more substantive things, especially since some of these decisions have come out of Washington DC since the change of administrations. So there wasn't a lot to talk about at Secog. Pioneer Community.
We did meet. We set the rates for the coming year. We had an additional one percent discount over PG&E, so it's a total of four percent discount from PG&E rates now. We also talked about the possibility of monetizing publicly owned charging stations, vehicle charging stations. There's an opportunity for cities and counties to sell credits based on the number and output of their charging stations. So there will be more information coming on that. And then we talked about biomass, upcoming biomass projects.
Cool. Well, thank you. Very exciting. Fire Safe.
We did not meet.
Opportunity Knox.
We meet next week.
Okay, great. Thank you. Are there, thank you. Oh, is there any public comment on the meetings we either did or did not go to?
Sir Rodman, member of the Fire Safe Council, there is a meeting tomorrow here in in which the county will be coming to tell us what they're doing with their two and a half million dollars to make to help us be fire safe.
Cool.
It's at five o'clock.
Here, five o'clock here. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Requests for future agenda items. Do we have any requests? And actually, at this point, I will take privilege here real quick. We did get, and I kind of blew past it, in the, oh, public comment section, we did get a request, a verbal request from a member of our community to add two discussion items to a future agenda. Policy for holding string light for holiday string lights over Main Street and availability of encroachment permits during the holiday season. So those are two kind of different things. Anyway, that was put in front of us. We can decide if we want to hear anything about it. We discussed it a little bit during our agenda review. Thank you. Agenda review. It's like having my wife over here. It's just like agenda review. And my recollection was it sounded like something that might be a problem that isn't. It's a perceived thing that isn't really an issue, because if you have an emergency, you can get an encroachment permit. The lights, we're responsible for the lights. But if you want to take them down for a specific reason, then you're kind of on the hook for paying us to do that. I'm getting nods from our engineer. Can maybe we can just get back to the person who asked this question and maybe just elucidate that. And I think the issue was on the encroachment permits was there was some defined dates in there that kind of was seen kind of long. There was a reason why those dates were in place. And but but if you have an emergency or something very compelling, you can get an encroachment permit even during it's right there. Yes. So anyway, so I just wanted to mention that. And if maybe we can always bring it back to discuss in a public setting. But I think we can get back to the individual and probably answer the question.
I I spoke to him today and basically explained all that. He didn't say, I don't want to do it now. But he seemed satisfied.
Okay, good.
When I explained the reason for the moratorium, which goes from Thanksgiving to end of December. Is that right?
Through the end of December, maybe January second.
Yeah, maybe just the first part of January. Anyway, and let me, the purpose for that is that we in the past, distant past maybe, but in the past have received have received encroachment permits from like a PG&E or an AT&amp;T to come in and do a repair on Main Street in the middle of the holiday season, which shuts down a lane of Main Street. That's what we were specifically trying to avoid. These one-offs that this was specifically brought up for, absolutely. If the correct information is brought in and we have everything we need, we absolutely will allow. We're not going to allow, you know, require somebody to miss a deadline or to, you know, heaven forbid, they're flooding and need an encroachment permit to do a repair. We're absolutely going to do an encroachment permit for those situations.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you very much. And if the person wasn't satisfied, we all know who he is, and he will definitely come back and let us know he wasn't satisfied. So that'll be great. Okay. City manager and staff reports, receive and file from the police? Anything you want to highlight? No. Okay.
Mayor and Council, attached December twenty twenty-four police stats. I have no comment.
Cool. Fire Station twenty-five.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In your packet, you'll see the run stats for Station twenty-five during the month of December of twenty twenty-four. Also, it has the annual call load for both Engine twenty-five and Medic twenty-five. Engine twenty-five last year ran three thousand three hundred and twenty calls. Of those, two thousand seven hundred and four calls were within the city. It breaks down about nine point one calls a day. Medic twenty-five remains the busiest medic unit in our system of eight ambulances. They ran three thousand four hundred and ninety-six calls last year, which is about nine point six per day.
That is.
Explains the sirens you hear on a routine.
That is on. And usually, when you do that, you have it so that somebody goes by with a siren on. It's almost like.
I'll follow up with that.
Yeah, I know. All right. And, yeah, really. Okay. And, hold on, we got one more of those. Development Services, Department's Development Permitting Statistics.
Mayor, members of the council, I spoke with the staff, building officials. Mayor and members of the council, I spoke with the staff, building official, and associate planner on the stats for December, and to my knowledge, this is, it's seasonally slow, it's just, it was December, and there's nothing out of the ordinary here. That concludes my report.
Well, thank you. We, we like ordinary on most occasions. Okay. Does a comment want to comment on our activities in item 15?
Just, Sue Rodman, I would like to come on the fire report. It's very nicely done. It is, it's clear, you can read the thing, it is, and it's, it's, it's nice. It's, it's got illustrations, it's got pictures, and it's got some very good graphics to let you know, you know, really what's going on. And I'm amazed at the amount of workload that Engine 25 and our ambulance does out of that station, that's just incredible.
Thank you.
Talked about spending a lot of money for internet connections and things like that, could you do something to make sure, whatever it takes to improve, to, to get internet in this room, because we don't have it tonight? And, and so what I do is, rather than print that whole volume, such as to see this great report that was done in the fire, I wait to read it in the room. But then I get here, and I found out you can't do it because it's not working. What are we going to do to get high-speed cable? I don't care what it is, a relay system or something, so that we can read these reports while we're here waiting? Just a second. And a question.
Thank, thank you, Kirk. You know, you can save it to your phone, and then call it up as a document. Okay, good, all right. I want to help you out, Kirk. I think, I think it's a great idea. I, I thank you very much for those comments. We have upcoming items, you can all read, so I'll let you do that. And we are now going to be adjourned. Thank you very much for coming.